Hello, and thank you for tuning into this forum focused on candidates buying to serve on the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. My name is Jessica Byer, President and CEO of Greater Mankato Growth, and I'd like to welcome you. For those of you who don't know about our organization, Greater Mankato Growth serves as the regional Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Organization. Greater Mankato Growth strives to serve as a nonpartisan information intermediary between candidates and the voters on issues impacting not only business, but the overall vitality of the region and the community at large. Elections are one of the most important and effective ways citizens can make their voices heard, and by providing our members, as well as the broader community, access to information presented in these candidate forums, we hope to enable them to make informed voting decisions. In addition to this forum, Greater Mankato Growth is also hosting a number of other forums in October for candidates seeking local offices. You can view a full lineup of our forums and the links to the video recordings on greatermankateolelections.com. In addition, we also have published our candidate online profiles, which include biographical information, as well as a questionnaire that each of the candidates have filled out, and you can go to greatermankateolelections.com to view all of that information. Before I begin, I'd like to pay a special thanks to KTV for partnering with us to produce these videos, as well as to host us in their studio. At this time, I'd also like to introduce media partner Ashley Hanley, News Director at KTOE. We are fortunate to have Ashley working with us, especially in COVID times, so that I can monitor the Zoom attendees, and she can focus on moderating the sessions. So at this time, I'm going to give some overview about the forum, and some of the framing remarks for how tonight will go, and then I'll turn things over to Ashley. So for this evening, the format will be as follows. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to make opening and closing remarks. Following their opening remarks, we will proceed to question and answer time. Candidates will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to questions. Any follow-up questions or discussion will be at the discretion of the moderator. Questions this evening may come in two forms. The first, questions will be selected by the moderator, and the second, questions will be submitted either in advance, or utilizing the chat feature via Zoom, and I will be reading off those questions and moderating those questions from Zoom. Ms. Hanley, I would now like to turn things over to you to start the forum. So, thank you for tuning in.
And thank you, Jessica. As she mentioned, I'm Ashley Hanley. I'm the News Director at KTOE, which is part of Radio Mankato, and you can listen to us for all your local election coverage from now until November 3rd, and probably beyond. I want to thank you for being a part of this and listening to this forum. We're very fortunate today to have the Blue Earth County Commissioner candidates with us, and the first one that we're going to talk about, running unopposed in District 3, is Mark Peepo. Then, running in District 4 with no incumbent is Paul Fitzsimmons and Kevin Pap. Running in District 5 are Kip Brunder, who is the incumbent, and Alan Marble. So first, we're going to start with opening statements, and because of COVID, we're going to start and just have each district go. So Mark is with us right now. So Mark, could you please give us your opening remarks?
Okay, thanks, Ashley. Well, it's really great to be here, and to be a part of, I guess, what I'd say that I have fun with is the political process, and I thoroughly enjoyed being the County Commissioner in the 3rd District for 12 years, and looking forward again for another term. And a big part of it is, I really like local government because it's closest to the people, and as Thomas Jefferson said, you know, the government's least is real democracy and works, and I think that's what county governments are like. And there's some challenges we face, but we look forward to that, and want to just let people know that I sincerely enjoyed serving, and I would like to continue, and that there's more to be done. And partly, it's just also the fact that I'm involved yet in the government, in decision-making at a local level, which I like the best.
Excellent. Well, our first question for you tonight is, why do you want to continue your service as a Commissioner?
Okay.
Starting with a hard one right away, huh?
Yeah, well, you know, we do have a budget every year that we have to deal with, and you know, there are issues that are ongoing. I guess today, the COVID situation does make a little different dynamic to it all, and different challenges, but I think we're overcoming them. And that's what's really cool or neat about county government, is that, you know, part of what we have is our Department of Health, and they, it's what's the, our health, anything dealing with that, public health, is all with Blue Earth County, and with the county public health, and of course, they're in the forefront with the COVID, in cooperation, of course, with the state and CDC and the rest, but it's, you get a firsthand look at, in this case, what's happening with that, and with all different other issues, whether it's with our roads, or human services, social services there, you're part of it, and it makes a difference.
Excellent. So you mentioned you've been Commissioner for 12 years, so what are you most proud of, and what do you want to accomplish in this next term?
Most proud of, let's see, I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. Some years, we've had, you know, lower tax rates, and, you know, we're trying to, obviously, we have to have a balanced budget, and we also have to take care of all the things we need to take care of, and to have a sound budget, and have a little, in, let's say, cushion because of the uncertainties at times. Blue Earth County, of course, we are in the, and I'm proud of that fact that we're in the bottom third of your property taxes per capita in the state, and that's good, and shows that, yeah, I think we're frugal with our tax dollars. And so, that's just a big part of that, to continue that, their deal also. I always like to talk about parks, recreation in our county, and our public works, and that's important. We have good roads, so transportation, so there are a lot of different things.
Excellent. Now, what would you say is the most significant challenge facing Blue Earth County, and how would you address it?
Hmm, the most difficult, I guess outside of the budget, well, we have certain things, like, we do have a dam, a county dam now, that they acquired many years ago for really very little, and so we'll have to deal with that in some form or fashion, whether because it's a company that was handling it, isn't excited about doing that, and it needs a lot of repair. We've had high water a number of years, and so that's had a toll. We did get some money, we even got some bonding from the state to help out, but some of that, what was done with the last rains, heavy rains, recent, a year or so ago, they kind of took care of that, so, we have problems, so whether we keep the dam, we'll have to figure out whether we want to have electricity yet, and sell that, and, yeah, it's, either way, it's going to cost money to try to get rid of it or keep it.
Sure, yep. So what would be your two or three top priorities for this next term?
Okay, I would say that I would definitely look at our tax base, or looking at taxes, making sure that they're the priority, keeping them as low as possible, and still doing our job. Secondly, would be to make sure that we oversee all our different departments, and that we are doing what needs to be done with the services. Interesting, see, Minnesota, your counties are the, locally do the social services, your human services, like mental health and financial assistance and those programs, and only if seven states in the country have the administrative arm, is done by counties for that, and human services, social services, so that's always a challenge to make sure that we do it correct, you know, we do things properly, and dealing with the state, and so that's another one.
For sure. So providing budgetary oversight and establishing a county property tax levy are an important part of the Commissioner's role, as you well know. So how do you view this role in balancing the need for strategic investment priorities with property tax considerations?
Well, that, yeah, that's why every time, every year when we deal with the budget, we look over what our strategic goals are, and then we proceed with, I always try to say it's a fine-tooth comb in the budget, to make sure that we're, and it's a process, orderly process, and it involves the Board, and of course, our administration, and the Administrator, and the department heads, and it's a process, a comprehensive one, and so we'll follow through with all those steps, and end up, in the end, with what we try, to have a realistic budget, but one that does meet the needs of our strategic goals that we set apart, set out.
Absolutely. And the county's role when it comes to things such as transportation or broadband, maybe those should be two separate questions, but talk about a little bit the Commissioner's role when it comes to transportation in the county.
Okay, yeah, either one or the other. The transportation, well, with the state, you're never very sure what kind of dollars we get from the state, and of course, it's a little bit of shortage in the transportation area. So what we do, we did a few years ago with the county, is that legislature did allow counties to enact a sales tax, and so we do have, you know, like a half-cent tax on, that goes towards our roads in Blue Earth County. So, and it was kind of a neat thing in the sense that it wasn't just the people in Blue Earth County who'd be paying for it, because we are a big sale center, we were getting a lot of people from out of the county helping to pay. You know, now, it's been affected a little bit with the COVID and stuff, so we'll see in the future, but that's been a big shot in the arm, so to speak, for our dollars for the county, for our county roads. It helped a lot.
Absolutely. And talk a little bit about the county's role in helping to ensure broadband expansion.
Broadband, yeah, well, we heard, we studied that, and we hired people to look at the feasibility of it in Blue Earth County, and we sought some grants, we got some grants in to look at that, and that's proceeding along, and it's, and pretty, you know, it'll happen sooner, I think, than later, that, yeah, we'll have it set where, obviously, your rural areas that are affected now, we'll have a carrier or two that'll be able to help with getting good broadband.
Absolutely. Now, what do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Hmm, are you capital projects outside of roads?
Yes.
Well, we did, obviously, we had to, because our building, we did, we obviously expanded our government center. The old Human Services Building was somewhat antiquated, and with the growth, and, you know, you don't like a lot of growth in a sense, but we are a growing county, we have more people, and more things happening, so it was going to happen. So we, yeah, we did that expansion, we did it with, it was a wise and a good investment, where we have people in the areas where there's the flow with the traffic, with people coming in and out, and it's bigger, people aren't on top of each other, and it's just, it's much better, and we did it for a good price, it was a good time to do it, and we did, and it's working out, I think, well.
Great.
Yep, and that's, of course, you can go and get your driver's license at the top on Fifth Street, you know, that's a little easier, so.
We always like that. All right. Well, Blue Earth County, of course, is made up of the urban area of Mankato and many rural communities. How do you propose balancing the unique characteristics and needs of both urban and rural Blue Earth County?
Well, of course, the rural is a big part, and I think that's, you know, in a sense, some people in the rural area know who their county commissioners more, because obviously they have the more county roads, and they have their ditches, they have, if they're farmers, you know, they got their regulations, you know, whether it's in the septic tanks, or of course, with the feedlots, whatever, the issues, so they're usually more acclimated to it. City, it's a little bit, sometimes a little bit harder for people to distinguish, but Blue Earth County has, we have, we have seven parks, and our latest was the Red Jacket Trail Park, and of course, they're all in fairly good proximity of Mankato, and particularly that one is, and that's been in cooperation with the city of Mankato, but it's, I think, a jewel, and if you've been to it, you see that. So it's things like that that we can do, that I think for people to be more aware. Obviously, the county delivers a lot of people services, and some, you know, people may not want to have anything to do with, but that's, you know, of course, with our, we also have a law enforcement, so that's part.
Yes, well, next question. Blue Earth County's ethnic diversity is steadily increasing. What does this mean for our county, and what, if anything, should the county be doing to ensure residents are able to thrive here?
Well, that's, yeah, that's why, that, very true, and we're real cognizant of that, and I think that's partly with the delivery of services, to make sure people are informed if they are in need, regardless of, you know, how long they've been here, or whatever, that some of those services are available. And it's to make sure that those services are delivered in an efficient manner and effective manner for people. You know, we practice all the equal opportunity, all the different things. We have a lot of different committees, just little committees, like parks, and your human services, that have committees of different areas. There's one in Corrections, one out at the, they usually meet at the Justice Center, I think. There's different ones in recycling, education, recycling, things like that, so it's nice, if we can get people of different nationalities, new people in, that's always good to have them on things, on those committees, too.
Definitely. Now, is there any recent decision by the current Board of Commissioners, obviously including yourself, that you particularly disagree or agree with, and why?
Well, particularly disagree here, agree?
Yes.
Well, I'd say, yeah, I'd say you agree. Let's see, we did lower our mill levy rate from what we were looking for, from 5% to 2.5%, so I think that's good, and might see if we can do more than that. So, you know, we're trying to do the best job with the stewards of the peoples' dollars, or tax dollars, so I think I like the fact that we did that, and.
Did you say the livability rate? I'm sorry, I didn't see or hear what you said the first time.
I was referring to the, oh, yeah, that was earlier, just the livability of being, you know, having a county with being where people want to be here, and that the livability of all of the attributes that we have, including like parks, or recreation, and all the rest, yep.
Yes. Well, the final question for me, before we move on to the Zoom questions. What is your leadership style, and why are you the best candidate for the job?
Leadership style, I like to be, like to interact with other Commissioners and with people all the time. That's kind of how I got into this, this public service and the politics of it all, is that you get to meet people, you get sometimes new people every day. It's a little more low-key, it seems to be, with a county commissioner. In fact, the first thing I could say is, when I first ran for county commissioner, people didn't really ask right away who I was running, who was the other opponent or candidate or anything, they just asked, well, what does a county commissioner do?
Yeah.
So it's a good thing I knew some things that they did. So, it's just kind of funny how that, it's just that way, because if people relate or not. So, was it, did I answer that?
I think so, kind of more it's about your leadership style.
Oh, my leadership style, well, that was, of course, was to, the fact is that, working with others, and seeing, you know, through their shoes, where they're coming from, and with that, you get to know a little bit more about them, and that way, understanding, understanding more what we can do with them, and about them, yeah, and then solving problems with that knowledge.
Definitely. Well, those are the questions that I have, but now we'll turn it over to Jessica, and Jessica, are there any Zoom questions available for Mark?
So, I do not have any Zoom questions, so you're clear on that, but we did have one other question we wanted to ask. So what has been the most rewarding project, or a project that you look forward to having accomplished as a county commissioner?
I hate to say it was because of, some of us worked really hard on the transportation, on the sales tax part, and we went to, we met with, well, we met with Greater Mankato Growth, we met with different groups, and I kind, yeah, and that worked out well, and that did a lot to help with our budget, but to help get more roads done in Blue Earth County. You know, it is a tax, but it was an option for us, and given the, or the dollars our transportation, tough to get, I'm proud that we actually did accomplish that, and it's helped a lot with our budget, and with our Public Works budget, and the opportunity then to do more with roads in our county, transportation.
Great. Now, we'll give you a couple of minutes to do your closing remarks.
I am humbled, always, through the years, being in public service, and I always think that you are a servant to the people, and that you're trying to do, I'm trying to do my best to serve people, and to take care of my duties as a county commissioner, and just really welcome that opportunity again to do that, and anytime anybody, if they can approach me in a grocery store, I won't name the stores, or they can, anywhere on the street, or of course, with COVID, but they can certainly do emails, they can certainly call, things like that. I think it's just, it's very rewarding to help people, either with a particular problem, or with even just carrying on with the works of the county, so I look forward to serving again.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time, and now we'll just take a short break, and we'll be back with the next round of candidates.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks. Welcome back to our next round with the Blue Earth County Commissioner candidates. Right now, we have the candidates for District 4, who are Paul Fitzsimmons and Kevin Pap. There's no incumbent in this race, and right now, we're going to turn it back over to Jessica Byer, who is the CEO and President of Greater Mankato Growth, and she's going to go over the format for these two candidates, and then we'll have their opening remarks.
Well, thank you to both candidates for joining us, and thank you for staying tuned to this forum. Just as a reminder, if those who are on Zoom have questions, you can utilize the chat feature to do so, and we will incorporate those into the moderated questions later on. As far as the format for the forum goes, each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to make opening and closing remarks. Following their opening remarks, we'll proceed to question and answer. Candidates will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to questions. Any follow-up questions or discussion will be at the discretion of the moderator, and questions this evening can come in two forms, questions selected by the moderator, or questions submitted in advance, or via Zoom. So I'll turn things back over to you, Ashley, for the forum.
Wonderful, thank you, Jessica. Our first question will go to Paul Fitzsimmons. How do you feel the role of county commissioner, and what do you think you can do to make a difference?
Well, you know, the role of a county commissioner is to really run the county, or work for the county, and organize it, run it just like you would any other business. And so, you know, and what I look at, in my experience in multiple businesses in Southern Minnesota, most of them around the Mapleton area, Good Thunder, is that the experience that I've got, have received over the years, managing about 280 employees, working along with them, building up businesses, getting people started, but these are, these are all things that will help me as a, in a county commissioner role. We do a lot of management for farms across the Midwest, and, you know, one of the things I've always told managers when they're on the farm, is that when I hand over a farm to them to run, it's like their dad giving them their Ferrari. You're going to get a $20 million facility that somebody owns, and you're to run it and take care of it. And, you know, and that's the kind of way I look at this job going into the county, is that, you know, the people in the county, in my District 4, will give me the opportunity to do that for them, is basically take that vehicle, and make sure that I handle it and manage it correctly, and work with the other parts of the county to make sure that gets done correctly.
Absolutely. And Kevin, the same question to you. How do you feel the role of county commissioner, and what can you do to make a difference?
Really, a county commissioner, it's a board. You know, you're a team, it's not an individual, five commissioners, you're a team, you're that board. I serve on a lot of boards, other boards as well. Really believe that the role of a Board of Directors is to direct and protect, direct administration, direct through the budget, protect our resources, our natural resources, our economic resources, but it's really to direct through that long-range planning, and then protect the resources we've got, and make sure we continue to have a good economy.
All right. And the next question now, back to Paul. Why do you want to be a county commissioner?
Well, you know, the first thing is, is that I feel very strongly that, you know, in Blue Earth County, you know, Mankato is really the center of the hub, but the rural area is very, very important to Mankato, and so I feel very, very strongly that we need to have some rural input on how the county is being run. You know, I, like Kevin, we live on gravel roads, and we live out, we live outside the, you know, the inner part of Mankato, and I think it's very important for this county that we have that representation from the rural part of the county, which is very important to the rest of it.
Absolutely. And Kevin, the same question to you. Why do you want to be Commissioner?
Well, I want to continue a role in leadership. I've got some proven experience in leadership. I've got relationships with others at the local state and national level, bring my passion to the job, as well as my community focus. I've, you know, learned at a young age, from my father, who was on the town board over 30 years, grandfather served as the Mayor of Vernon Center for over 25 years, how important local government is, and how important it is to be engaged in local government.
Absolutely. And I got so excited to talk to you guys that I forgot to ask you for your opening remarks, so we're going to take a step back here, and can I have each of you spend about two minutes, just telling us a little bit about yourself and your opening remarks? So we'll go back to Paul.
Well, I grew up in Good Thunder, outside of Good Thunder, a family farm. I still farm, or farm the ground that we grew up on. I also came from a very large family. You know, if I put them all together right now, I think we got about 150 immediate, and so I work every day with my brothers, six brothers, and got a couple sisters, and so what we do is, we run protein sources milling out of, out of Mapleton, but we manage facilities for other people throughout Iowa, Wisconsin, Missouri, North Dakota, and Minnesota, and pretty much up and down Minnesota. So we built the business, we own an elevator in Good Thunder, bought a small elevator in Good Thunder, and have grown that, and Good Thunder is really my roots, and, but, you know, the part of me, it's about family and community, and, you know, and I was in Good Thunder yesterday, and I was knocking on doors, and I'm amazed at the, as I go through the town in which I grew up with, how young it is, but how much opportunity there is in these small towns outside of, you know, in and around Mankato. And I think as a county commissioner, I want to really push for that opportunity for some of these outer cities, outer small communities to grow, and make things easier, whether it's permitting, getting small businesses started, that's really going to be my focus.
Okay. And Kevin, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm a lifelong Blue Earth County resident, you know, really, except for college. Time away at college, I've only ever lived in three houses on two yards and a half a mile from each other, all in Blue Earth County, Vernon Center Township, and I want to, you know, we're the, I'm fourth generation, we've got the fifth and the sixth generation just a half mile down the road, and I want to make the county, the entire county, better for everyone, have those opportunities, continue to be engaged. Married to my wife Julie for 36 years, we have two sons, Matthew works here in Mankato. Our other son, Andrew, is married to Samantha, he works in Lake Crystal, she works here in Mankato, and the most important, we've got a grandson, Lennox, that is about a year and a half.
All right. Well, thank you both. Now that we know a little bit more about you, we'll get back to the questions. So the next. So the next question is, what is the most significant challenge facing Blue Earth County, and how would you address it? We'll go back to Paul.
Well, I think coming through the COVID, that the most significant challenge that we're going to have in Blue Earth County going forward, and probably in any county, is going to be, you know, what this budget's going to look like. You know, as you go, as you go about the county, I don't care where you drive in the county, you see everybody is hurting. I said the COVID has done one thing, it put us all in the same playing field. We're all, every business has felt it and felt the effects. So the county, being what it should do, you know, leading that thing, it has to take a very strong look on it and join in, and what's this county going to look like, and how are we going to budget, just like everybody else? You know, I run multiple businesses out of Mapleton. We have all taken a hit, we're all cutting back, and we're trying to do these things that we need to do to maintain. And I think the main thing is, is that to get back on a good footing, the county's going to have to lead the way. And you're going to, you'll see it. So being very, very fiscally responsible going forward is going to be how this budget is set, and where it goes is going to lead the county back. And to do that, we got to, we got to make sure that the taxpayers in the county are getting a bang for every dollar that we spend. So that's really going to be the drive. And then I think there's other issues coming on. We've probably got, the dam is going to be an issue. You know, they talked about 50 million. I don't know what's going to happen there, but there's, there's big things on the horizon that we're going to have to take care of going forward. But the budget is always going to be the top priority.
Sure. And Kevin, same question to you. What do you think is the most significant challenge that is facing Blue Earth County? And how would you address it?
Well, as I've been visiting the residents, you know, it kind of goes down to about the top five things, A, B, C, D, and E. You know, certainly agriculture is an important part, but it's the budget, and then C being COVID, and that, and those two together. And the increase in expenses, the less income because of that, the dam for D, and E is kind of tie between the economy, making sure we've got a good economy in the county, and we protect the environment. But certainly, if you had to pick the one to worry the most about, it has to be budget, and budget because of the COVID-19 additional expenses, and probably less revenue.
Okay. Our next question is a little deep one. What would be your top two or three priorities if you are elected?
Within the county?
Yes.
I think the top priority I'd like to do is make sure, and I've been involved in permitting, again, I'm on the, in the livestock industry, is making sure that Blue Earth County, and they have been very, very good over the, over the years, stays consistent. And as we run into problems permitting in other counties, county commissioners are a big, big part of that consistency. So, but I would prioritize trying to get, make it much easier for small businesses to start in rural, in the rural portion. Have people be able to stay at home, start their business on their farm if need be, because it cannot be, on the permitting side, it cannot be a one-size-fits-all. What works in Mankato is not what needs to work out in, out in the rural areas. So we've got to be a little bit flexible on how that works, but be consistent from start to finish in how those things can all come about. And then I would push that the small business loans that are going out, that we continue to do that. And the ones that I've seen fail, the planning on the front end has not been well-established. But to help people, put a little more emphasis on the front end, business planning, helping them get, get through that first year. Business gets through the first year, the odds of it making are very good. So put, put a little more emphasis on not only the loan, but how are we helping them set up and maintain and manage their business once they're up and running?
Okay. And same question for Kevin. What would be your top two or three priorities if you were to be elected?
Well, as a county commissioner, I think your top priority has to be to build trust, build trust with everybody in the county. And you build that trust through communications, you build that through accountability, through transparency, making sure you have open lines of communication at all times. And I think the other thing would be is to spend more time listening. You know, we need to remember silent and listen have the same amount of letters in them. And sometimes we need to spend less time talking, more time listening to the constituents, listening to other groups, listening to those that are impacted, and working together. You know, we've learned in agriculture as an early age, working together works, working with your neighbors, we need to work together as a county board with all the organizations.
All right. And our next question, we're going to switch to the budget now again. Providing budgetary oversight and establishing a county property tax levy are important parts of a commissioner's role. How do you view this role in balancing the need of strategic investment, priorities, and property tax considerations?
I'm always going to err on the side of lower taxes. I'm just there. You know, try to understand the county budget. If anybody tells you they can understand that county budget on day one, they're lying to you. So it's a very, very complicated form, and the formulas that go into it. And it's split out into multiple fractions of it, or places for it to go. So learning to understand that, to get to your answer, is it's going to take some time before you can really, anybody can really say they're going to jump right in and understand that portion of it. You know, about 29% of it is Health and Human Services. So a lot of it is pass-through funds coming from federal on down. The vet services, about 29 million comes in through, through the veterans' portion of it. It's, it comes through the budget, but it's basically a pass-through. So understanding how all those pass-throughs work, understanding how the landfill works, and whether the landfill is profitable and all those. But those are the things that it, it'll take time to understand that full measure of the budget, but there are just things you're not going to, you're not going to move. It's coming in, and you're passing it through, so you're basically, you're handing the money for somebody else. But on the tax levy, I mean, to get this economy back up and going, we are going to have to make sure that the people in the, in the county maintain as much of that as we can to get their businesses back up and running, to get that revenue back.
Okay. And same question to you. Would you like me to repeat it?
I would, please.
Yes, it's kind of a long one. But providing budgetary oversight and establishing a county property tax levy are important parts of a commissioner's role. How do you view this role in balancing the need for strategic investment priorities with property tax considerations?
Well, I would go back to your role as a board member, is to direct and protect, looking at your long-range goals, but also protecting the assets you've got. As you look at a budget, there's only so many dollars coming in. And as you look at property values, they kind of lag from here, so it's not a great indicator. I'm a fiscal conservative. We've got to make sure, we've got to spend the money like it's our own. Make sure we have those opportunities. Like Paul has said, there's a lot of things that we're a fiscal agent, and a lot of those things, they're mandated, and not a lot of choice. But we've got to look at each and every area. You know, 14 departments, that's a lot of different areas in the county, a lot of different employees. They're doing a good job now with the budget, but we've got to take a look at this. If we don't have the money, we can't spend it.
Okay. Now another question. What do you view the county's role as when it comes to transportation?
Well, it's to make sure the roads are in good shape.
Yes.
And that's the main, that's probably the main drive. And as you see, I was watching the county meeting the other day as they were going through, you know, the projects from MinDOT that are expected to happen in the years. But, so that, that ever-evolving, you know, repair. But the other thing is, is that trying to run a business out of Mapleton, I think we bought the business in 2000, in the year 2000. I don't think I've had a year where there hasn't been a major road construction I haven't had to work around at some point. So it does disrupt business to a great extent. And so as you're doing that, as you're making sure that the roads are in good repair, making sure that we can still have commerce moving up and down, and not have that big deterrent from businesses getting done what they need to get done every day. I mean, I run, I run a business that I've got to, I have got to deliver 1,000 tons of feed every day. And if I don't deliver it, and the roads, and I, you know, I've got to take detours, and it becomes a big, time-consuming, and costly. So we need to, we need to take care of our roads. I think we've got 500, 500 miles, or I think it's 500 miles of gravel. And so, but maintaining the roads is, that is, you know, it's probably, besides just being the government, number two on what the county government should be taking care of.
Okay. And Kevin, the same question to you. What do you view the county's role as when it comes to transportation?
Well, transportation is critical, you know, whether it's transporting products away from the farms, inputs to the farms, transporting people back and forth. We really need to think, though, about transportation infrastructure. It's not just roads, it's roads and bridges, it's other things. You know, we've got six rivers in Blue Earth County. We've got over 550 miles of waterways, and we need to really make sure that we have that opportunity to worry about the roads, that they're properly maintained, but also those bridges, and things like that. And I assume we'll probably get into other infrastructure things, like broadband and things like that. It's not just transportation, it's all of that infrastructure.
Absolutely. And now that we're about halfway through, we're going to switch the order of the questions. So Kevin will go first for this round. So Kevin, what do you see the role of the county government as when it comes to broadband?
Well, I think the role is to make sure we get to that last mile of broadband, that everybody is served. And it's not just, do you have broadband, yes or no? Do you have adequate broadband? Is it high speed? I mean, one of the, there's not been many if any good things about the COVID-19, but it has all of us understanding how important high-speed broadband is, bandwidth is, to our homes, and whether it's with business, working from home, whether it's learning from home, whether it's agriculture, precision agriculture, broadband is necessary for that. Whether it's telemedicine, you know, there's not much we can do today and be competitive and not have adequate and affordable broadband. Having it is one thing, making sure it's affordable is another important tool.
Okay. And Paul, the same question to you. What do you view the county's role as when it comes to broadband?
Well, I'd agree that, again, one of the COVID thing, side marks of the COVID is, is that everybody's, everybody's using the internet. And there are, that's probably the biggest change that's going to happen socially, is what's going to, you know, whether, you know, schools, everything is moving in that direction. So, but the county needs to make sure that they, in some ways, don't hinder the expansion of broadband, whether, you know, making sure that they're not in the way of private industry coming in and getting that done, and helping us get that implemented across the county. So private industry will take care of it. If we, if the county gets, if we just make sure that we're not going to slow them up from, from making those decisions to get it out. They just brought broadband or buy my, when they redid County Road 10. But there was only multiple people that could get it. And if you were on the line, and some of them has come through, and it hasn't, you haven't been able to get it even though it went right by your driveway. So opening that up and making sure that everybody that's online can get it. But I think private industry will help take care of that, if we just make sure that they have the right and the freedom to get some of that completed also, so.
All right. Moving on to the next question. What do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? And Kevin, we'll start with you.
Well, whether it's infrastructure, capital project, anything, it goes back to that budget. Can we afford it? I think as we have some budget constraints, we've got to look at some capital projects. Is now the time to do it? Is now the time to do the improvement? There's going to be plenty of things that are necessary, that are going to be required that to spend the money on as we look at capital projects. Now, we want to continue to try to keep things up. Certainly, the dam is something I hope we'll talk about a little bit as well. You know, we've got to make sure we keep that, that regional amenity safe for people and safe for the county, and make some decisions, will we do anything else with the dam as far as generating electricity and things like that? So as you look at capital projects, whether it's building a new shop, whether it's roads and bridges, or if it's new facilities, I think each one, we have to look at very closely, considering our budget considerations.
Absolutely. And Paul, to you. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Well, I, there's a stretch of road from Highway Amboy West, and I see that's on the agenda by the DOT to get completed. But completing some of those state highways, making sure those, those things get done. But otherwise, you know, we are, if we're looking at, if we're looking at controlling the budget, the capital, the capital expenditures are going to have to be number one. So it's going to be as an extreme need for a period of time. But, you know, equipment, and anything, I think that, any kind of a capital expenditure that would improve safety to the citizens, I think is, would probably rise to the top of the, top of the list. But here again, I think you're looking at, as you take a look at what the county's, what the county capital expenditures are, and the way they're planned out, I'm with Kevin on that. I think the dam, the dam is going to be an issue that at some point, somebody's going to have to deal with it, and at the Rapid End Dam. And so that portion of that planning is going to, is going to take, just planning on what's going to happen with that is going to take a large amount of funds, I believe. And so that, but I think any of the capital expenditures, until we get things back on our feet, are going to have to be very scrutinized.
Okay. And the next question. Blue, Blue Earth County, of course, is made up of the urban area of Mankato and many rural communities. How do you propose balancing the unique characteristics and needs of both urban and rural Blue Earth County?
I think we have to remember, working together works. We need to work together. The last thing we need is polarization. We don't need to all go in different directions. We need to work together. We've got, in our district, we've got a dozen, or 10 small communities, we've got, you know, 13 townships that all need to work together. And we need to work together with Mankato. So as a county commissioner, you're part of a team. You're not just representing your district, you're representing the, in the entire county. So you would need to work together with the other commissioners, all the citizens of the county, to get the best job done. Working together does work. We learned that in agriculture a long time ago.
All right. And Paul, the same question to you. Blue Earth County is made up of the urban area of Mankato and many rural communities. How do you propose balancing the unique characteristics and needs of both urban and rural Blue Earth County?
Well, I truly believe not, neither one can exist without the other. But I, I would be voted on to represent the rural portion. And in my end, you know, I feel I will represent the rural portion. You know, we take a look at the population structure, population structure is around Mankato, but everything that around it supplies Mankato. And so it is very easy to lose sight of what happens in, out of Mankato city limits. So from my end, from what I feel, is that as representative of District Four, I need to, I need to be able to work with the other commissioners, but I also need to be very strong in my commitment to the values that are, that lie in and around Mankato. I am, I will not give that up, because if, if I give that up, and don't have, take a strong stance there, then it will all be, it will all be. So even if I have to vote four to one, I'm the one out, I'm going to vote for the, for the district that I represent, which is rural. So that's going to be my focus.
Okay. Our next question. Blue Earth County's ethnic diversity is steadily increasing. What does this mean for our county? And what, if anything, should the county be doing to ensure residents are able to thrive here?
Well, I think it means, most importantly, lots of opportunities. We want an economy that's thriving, we want a workforce that, that we have jobs for people, and we want people that, that want to come to Blue Earth County to work. So let's make sure that we've got that adequate workforce, we've got the jobs available, let's work together. It also has some challenges, whether it's challenges in the school system, the smaller communities. But again, if we work together, we can work through these opportunities and work through these challenges.
Okay. And the same question for you.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, the one thing is, is we got to make sure that in Blue Earth County, that the education system is the absolute best. And for, for these jobs, for the opportunities, the opportunities that, that we get when we have a very diverse, they're, it's great, the opportunities are big. And so, but the education will lead it. And if we start to fall behind on, on educating them and graduating and doing these things to get people so that, you know, when you come out of, when you come out of a high school or college, you have, you have already done the blend. That needs to go out, and you follow it right on through. So make, make schools safe, make the places safe so the kids can get an education. And the opportunities are endless for anybody in, in Blue Earth County that is looking for a good-paying job, they're all here. So showing those opportunities to make sure those, everybody, everybody- So showing those opportunities to make sure those, everybody, everybody understands, you know, what, what good paying jobs and what, if you want to work, the jobs are out here and you can make a good living in Mankato or in the surrounding area.
All right. Our next question. Is there any recent decision by the current Board of Commissioners that you particularly disagree or agree with and why?
Well, I think the one that probably has the most impact for the rural part of the county, whether it's District Four, that all the rural, was the updating the feedlot ordinance, which was very necessary. That'll be helpful as we move forward, helping that next generation become more involved in agriculture on the family farm. So really appreciate all the work that they did, listening sessions, the different open houses. It's a little tougher with COVID, there was no doubt about that. But some of the changes to the, the updates to the, the livestock ordinance was a definite positive in my mind.
All right. And Paul, the same question for you.
Yeah, I would, I would say the same thing. I would, you know, and I was kind of hoping maybe just because of the importance of that feedlot decision, that they maybe would have held it off till we had a little bit normal, we're back to some sort of normal. We, there was, there was the listening sessions on the front end, but once COVID hit and everything started to back off, as they started, started to move forward with them, it really, to me, it really didn't lend to, I think they voted on it July 28th. It really didn't lend to being at that final meeting. You know, the call-ins, for a vast majority of the people, the call-ins just wasn't going to, it wasn't going to do what was needed to be as far as input at that point. And, you know, and I, but I, I will say, the feedlot ordinance, which was put in in 1993, 94, has held very, very strong. And again, I, I give the, the feedlot division in Blue Earth County very high marks because they've been very consistent. So that, that part of it, I just didn't think that at that time, at this time, that they should have probably proceeded until we had more of a quorum.
Okay. All right. The final question for me before we move on to some Zoom questions, if there are any. So what is your leadership style and why are you the best candidate for this job?
Well, my leadership style is certainly is, is a proven leader, you know, very passionate about leadership, articulate. I've got some experience in leadership at the local, state, and national level. But it's, it's back to that communication two ways, spend more time listening. So leadership style is sometimes lead when you need to, but also step back and let others do this. I'll go back to it again, working together works and that works in a leadership style as well.
All right. And Paul, your thoughts on your leadership style and why are you the best candidate for this job?
Well, like I said, I was one of, one of seven boys. So you have to work to try to find a leader in that group. It was always a fight. I, I think my leadership style is, is I've built these businesses, you know, from the ground up, it's, I lead by example. There is not a job on any of these farms that I can't do and wouldn't do. And so as I put people in leadership roles, they understand the same thing. If you're not teaching, you're, you're going backwards. And so conversations, the leadership styles, being able to have a conversation, being able to have somebody come up and disagree with you and then say, okay, now we got to find a way to move forward. And so all of the leaders that we've, that we've trained, that is what, that is what I stress to them. You, you need to be able to take somebody and teach them on a day to day. And every day you're going to get a new employer, you could get a new employee, and you have to start over again, and you have to understand that. And, but that is being a leader. And then you, you better be able to do any job that you're asking somebody else to do. So it's really lead by example.
Great. Well, now we're going to turn it over to Jessica. And Jessica, are there any questions that have been submitted through Zoom?
Well, I do have one advanced question. And so that question is, what do you see as key opportunities for Blue Earth County moving forward?
Okay. And maybe we'll go back to Paul answering first because we did about five and five for each before.
The key opportunities for Blue Earth County moving forward?
Yes.
You know, Blue Earth County is, and Kevin mentioned it, has this vast resource of rivers. And then you drive down and, and we don't use them like south, you go down to southeastern Minnesota where every river has multiple attractions along it. We have our rivers flowing through these communities, every one of them, and we do not use that resource like to, as, as part of our daily recreation. And, you know, there's, I've always dreamt of having, there should be something on the river right outside of here, some kind of a floating bar that we could, but I, I take a look. Because we have all those natural resources flowing through, and it's a great place to live, we've got great colleges, we've got great schools. The, I see, you know, Blue Earth County should become kind of the hub of where people want to spend their summer. And because we've, we've just got natural resources to no end. You know, and like I said, I, I think we've probably got more Riverbank in Blue Earth County than anywhere else in the country. So it's, that is really an opportunity. And then we've got an opportunity to grow. Everything that we have going on here is, is good. The agricultural, it's going to be strong. It's going to come back and be strong. And we've got a college, I'd like to see livestock portion of it come to MSU out of the U. So I've been pushing on that at the legislative, but I think we need to expand it. I can't, I cannot, I do not like people going to South Dakota State and staying there. So we got to find that agricultural school in, in Mankato.
All right. And Kevin?
You know, Blue Earth County, we've got a lot of great natural resources, but we've also got a lot of great human resources. I mean, this is a safe community, our public safety is, is doing a great job. Up here at Bethany, we've talked about the colleges already, but we've got a healthcare system, you know, second to none. We're very fortunate with that. So we've got healthcare, we've got education, we've got a great school systems, but we also have jobs. We've got those businesses. We've got those jobs, if you want to work in Mankato, there's a job to have. If you want to be out of the county, there's lots of opportunities in those small communities and on the different farms. So we've got a lot of opportunities, not only with natural resources, but probably just as many with those human resources. I think there's a lot of counties that would love to switch positions with Blue Earth County where they don't have that hub in those jobs, the education system, the healthcare system, as well as public safety, adequate housing, things like that.
Definitely. And now we're going to move on to closing remarks. And since we let Paul go first for the beginning, we'll let Kevin go first for the, the closing remarks. You have two minutes.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this, really appreciate all those. And this is, you know, Will did a great job, 14 years as county commissioner, 31 years in law enforcement. And having the open seat, we saw that with, with five people wanting to do this. This is an important job for Blue Earth County, important job for, for Blue Earth County, fourth congressional district. So I want to bring my time and my talents, my experiences and my passion to the county to, to continue to make that a good opportunity for the next generations. You know, the driveway I left to drive out of here tonight was 124 years ago. We used that same driveway. I want to make sure Blue Earth County is a place where if people want to continue to live here, have those opportunities and have great things happen in Blue Earth County.
Wonderful. And Paul, your final remarks.
Yeah, you know, and I, I'd be, I need to mention, you know, my, Kevin did, my wife and, my wife and three daughters, two of which still live within the county and, and my wife of 42 years coming up here very, very quickly, actually next week, I think, reminds me. But no, I, I am running for this because I, I think I will do a, the experience that I've had in managing multiple budgets, multiple financial situations on multiple companies over multiple years is, is what I can bring to the table. I, I did receive the endorsement of two of the former candidates, Bob Dish from Rapidan and Brian Reeve from, from Pleasant Mount Township. And that, and you know, it's very humbling when that happens. But I, I believe I bring something to the board on the business background and, and I can touch on, I'm very, very strong. I've permitted, been in the permitted process across the state and across the four, four, four states. And to solidify that portion of, of the, of the county, I am, I'm going to be a voice for, for the rural portion. I, that's where I'm, I'm going to, that's where I'm going to land. That's where I grew up. And so I believe that I can be a strong, strong voice for that, that portion of the county and, and work with the rest of the county, of the county commissioners. But they, they are the ones that I will represent going into this position.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much for your time. And we'll take a short break and we'll be back for round three of our Blue Earth County Commissioners Forum. Welcome back to our third round of this forum with the Blue Earth County Commissioners Candidates. Right now, we're on to District Five, where we have Kip Brunder, who is the incumbent, going against Alan Marbleton. And before we get started, we're going to turn it over to Jessica Byer, the CEO and President of Greater Mankato Growth, who's going to go over the format for tonight's forum. Jessica?
Thank you, Ashley, and welcome back, everyone, and welcome candidates. The format for our forum is as follows. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to make opening and closing remarks. Following opening remarks, we'll proceed to question and answer. Candidates will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to questions. Any follow-up questions or discussion will be at the discretion of the moderator. Questions this evening may come from one of two sources. The first, questions will be selected by the moderator. And second, questions will be submitted either in advance or via Zoom utilizing the chat feature. So we welcome those on Zoom to participate by submitting questions in the chat feature. We'll get on to the forum now. Over to you, Ashley.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. And so we decided that the order of these questions is going to go by alphabetical order by last name. So Kip Brunder, you're going first. Can we hear your opening remarks? Tell us a little bit more about yourself.
Thank you very much, Ashley and Jessie, for having us. We really appreciate this information getting out in front of the public. A little bit about myself, my name's Kip Brunder, I'm owner for County Board, District Five. Been on the board for 18 years. Prior to that, I was the mayor of Eagle Lake for six years, a small community just east of, east of here. I'm born and raised in Eagle Lake, married my lovely wife, Kim, 37 years ago, and we have three grown children. Two of them are still in the community and my youngest, my daughter is down in Nashville, Tennessee. We have two granddaughters that are in the Mankato area, and I own a small business, jeans repair in Eagle Lake, and it was a company my dad started about 45 years ago and I bought it from him in 2012. And so I still run that repair shop when I have time, being on the county board and have a good customer base, and we do auto repair and, and light maintenance on cars. But again, thank you for having us. We do appreciate this.
All right. Thank you. And Alan Marble, could you tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
My name is Alan Marble. I farm just south of Mankato. I've raised 3,000 head of finishing hogs and run the family farm that I've taken over from my father and his grandfather and I'm sixth generation now. So I have three children, been married for 30 years, been in the community the whole time, just wanted to serve the community and do my best part.
Wonderful. All right, we'll go on to the questions then. So our first question, how do you view the role of county commissioner and what do you think you can do to make a difference?
I think the biggest thing that I can contribute to the county board is the fact that I like to listen to people. I have to listen to what their concerns are, see how they fit inside the policies and the procedures that the county has. At the end of the day, the constituency is my boss, and then the county board has regulations over all of the other staff in Blue Earth County. And I think that by being able to talk to people and listen to their concerns and if we can change the positions or the ordinance or policies that we have in place, that's wonderful. But being out there and just being able to talk to people and bring their concerns to the county and the county board is probably the biggest task I have. It's not always an easy task because when people come to talk to us, a lot of times it's not about something that they're in favor of. So trying to get that to fit inside your scope of, of being able to change something gets to be very difficult. And at the end of the day, sometimes you just have to tell them you can't help them. But you have to listen a lot and just try to spend a lot of time getting it dealt with and do the best you can.
All right. And Alan, the same question for you. How do you view the role of county commissioner and what do you think you can do to make a difference?
Like Kip, you listen to a lot of people. When I was on the Soil and Water Board, we got to listen to different aspects of what was going on and how to bring more projects on the farm to do water quality, save the, save the ground because we don't, you don't make it back up. Once it goes down the river, it's gone. Listening to people when I was on the Soil and Water Board really helped me help solve problems and go that way.
All right. Now, why do you want to be the county commissioner? We'll go back to Kip.
I think when I started my political career on a write-in campaign for the City of Eagle Lake mayor, by just a few votes I won, that very question was asked to me is, why do you, why do you want to be the mayor? Well, my first response was, I want to be the mayor because you're in control of what's going on and I didn't want to be on the council because that was a four-year term and what if I didn't like it and I'd have to deal with that? So the biggest question was, why do you want to do this? And at that point, it was a relatively easy question for me because, as I mentioned in my opening statement, my wife and I are both born and raised in Eagle Lake, Minnesota. We enjoy that area. We had our business there, we were raising our kids there, they were in the school there. And it was just a way to give back. So kind of back to the old, I want to give something back to the community and try to do something. And so we ran for the mayor and, and got in. And as I was doing that, I just really enjoyed it and being part of the community. And a city and county politics is the grassroots of politics. It is just a good way, you, you talk to people and a lot of times you can get something done for them and they're just really appreciative of that. And so it's nice to be able to give back in that way when you can see the project get started, go through the process, get finished. As I said earlier, they don't all finish the way you want them to, but the ones that do it makes, this makes you feel really good. And just being in this area, and it also works really well with my business. Being a small business owner, I'm gone a lot, but it's mostly local stuff, so it just works out really well, the fit for my business and my family.
All right. And Alan, the same question for you. Why do you want to be county commissioner?
I wanted to have people to have a choice for a chance to change. I feel that by running, I give people a choice, but to not have a choice leads to other things that probably shouldn't go on. Just felt that I could serve the community and give more back. And it does make you feel better by giving back a little bit.
Absolutely. Now, what would you like to accomplish in this next term or your first term, whatever it may be?
Boy, my next term, the four-year term, there's just, there's still actually a lot of things I'd like to see done. And for me to stay beyond the county board for 18 years and want to run for another four years, usually I lose interest in stuff after 10 or 12 years and actually had thought about running for a state seat at some point. But I just like the county level so much, it's so fun to work on it. And some of the big projects we have to deal with, obviously, is COVID. How do we deal with that? How do we keep our public safe? How do we keep the staff safe? How do we keep the staff up to date and keep them informed so they can provide good service for our community? We also have some other big capital projects, the city, the city shop or the county shop is starting to get to the end of its life, so that's something that's going to be a big investment of probably 30, 35 million dollars. I've been very fortunate in Blue Earth County that when I got, not long after I got on the board, we did the Justice Center of 42 million dollars. And Jessica was key in putting a lot of that stuff together and it was a lot of fun doing that. And then we just did the renovation of the, the new, the new administration building for the, for the county, basically, of about 26 million dollars. So it's fun to be part of those projects. And I think I bring the voice of concern of how much is it going to cost to the table and how can we afford this and how are we going to pay for it? And make sure there's a real need for it and make sure we're not building something just because we need to build it. So that's what I'd like to see done in the next four years.
All right. And Alan, the same question for you. What would you like to see done in, in the next four years?
To bring more of the county board back to the people to listen to what's going on. You hear sometimes the things going on out in, in rural ag don't get the same, they don't get the paper, they don't get internet, you know, broadband with school kids, COVID, that stuff. Just not, you know, listening to the people and trying to bring the office back to the people to understand what's going on and why it's being done that way. There's some concerns about watershed quality that I think the county needs to take a better leadership with that.
Excellent. And this next question kind of ties into the last one, but just giving another opportunity to talk about some issues. What would be your top two or three priorities? What would be your top two or three priorities if you were elected? We'll go back to Kip.
I really like to try to maintain our budget, try to keep our taxes relatively low. We have a lot of challenges coming up. So we need to keep our, the citizens in this area are just going to have some struggles. So property taxes shouldn't be at the top of their list. I think good communication between the ag area and the cities, the small cities in Blue Earth County. We are rural representatives. Alan brings up a good point about water quality. We can't get water back. We will probably never see the day where we're talking about our water and that we used to wash our cars out in the yard with perfectly good, clean water. But I think our grandkids will. You know, they're going to tell our grandkids that we used to do that, and they're going to say, you're crazy. Why did you waste all that good water washing your car? So I think those environmental issues are also very, very important. Water quality and the way the river is running and erosion and it comes into planning and zoning issues because you can't let everybody do what they want with their land. But I'm a strong supporter of people being able to do what they want with their land within reason. There's a lot of things that, you know, that come up that experts tell me about that are a concern. And we just have to try to look out for the environment. And being on the county board as long as I have, we have had a couple houses that we had to purchase because they're built too close to the bluffs and they get washed in. And so that's a challenge. We have to try to figure out how we get all that done.
Absolutely. And Alan, the same question for you. What would be your top two or three priorities if you were to get elected?
The budget would be one, to watch taxes, you know, on the farmland. It's one of the best costs. We've got new school going into Mapleton. That's going to be a factor in taxes. There's some things that have been done with the county, such as buying a house that was going to go in the river. But we've got to look at some of those houses that have been bought and sold. But they're now getting closer to the river. And we've set a precedent. That would be one. Some of the erosion on the county land is, needs to be dealt with. Just, and then try to maintain roads and bridges.
Definitely. Okay, the next question. Providing budgetary oversight and establishing a county property tax levy are important parts of a commissioner's role. How do you view this role in balancing the need for strategic investment priorities with property tax considerations?
It starts early. We just no more than get the budget done. And then by April, the county administrator and our staff is already bringing back, talk about getting together with the department heads and moving forward with the next year's budget. And things move around from the start to the finish. And trying to organize what is our priority and what can we afford is the biggest thing. And we get a lot of that just working through the process. We have informational meetings. The county staff does a great job bringing recommendations back to us as a county board. We discuss them at the county board level, have great discussion amongst the other board members and the other people that are trying to give us input. But trying to keep a levy low and affordable for people is always a challenge. We are very fortunate here in Blue Earth County, and most people know that we are fairly well-funded. We don't have a lot of the challenges that some of these smaller communities have and smaller counties and smaller cities. We have a relatively good fund balance. And we will actually, well, the last several years, our budget has been a deficit budget because we are using some of the reserves. And this year isn't going to be any different. We'll be using some reserves to get through this hard time. But that's what the reserves are for, is my thoughts.
All right. And Alan, the same question for you. Providing budgetary oversight and establishing a county property tax levy are important parts of a commissioner's role. How do you view this role in balancing the needs for strategic investment priorities with property tax considerations?
Not being a politician or anything, but getting into this, learning more and more. Take it back to the farm. You learn where to do what you can do. And one of, a good economist told me, it's not that you do one thing 100% better, but you do 100 things 1% better. And that's what I would like to bring to the board.
Excellent. Okay, now what do you see the county's role in when it comes to transportation?
Transportation in the rural area is very challenging. We are working very hard trying to get some more rural transportation. I think they have a pretty good system in the city of Mankato. And we are trying to get that to expand out into the rural area. But it is very difficult. And just a couple examples, last year, the bus tried to come out to Eagle Lake. And I would see the bus go by, and there'd only be one or two people in it. And finally, about after a month of this, my wife just would tell me, don't look in the bus when you're driving by it. Because it's just frustrating. You know, there is a need out there. We hear a need for it. But then when you try a pilot program like that, and it just doesn't work because it's just not convenient. And I don't, it was through the city of Mankato, and I really appreciated that they gave it a try. And I'm not, I know they made some adjustments to it. But the transit in the rural areas is challenging. Vine does a great job with their program that they have. So I think we have to give them people a lot of credit. Because I don't think it's nearly as bad as it could be. With them guys running stuff around, that works out really well. The bus system, you know, we got some money from the federal government and the state government. And then we fund a little bit with our sales tax money. So we are trying to get out into the rural area. But it is a big challenge. And to be, I really don't hear a lot of it when I'm out campaigning and talking to people. People are getting their own rides. And the problem with bus systems is if you have a route, it's very difficult to handle.
And Alan, the same question for you. What do you see the county's role in when it comes to transportation?
Trying to get a public transportation in a rural area is very difficult because even when the school buses are out, they aren't running full either anymore. There isn't the population out in the rural area to do that. To have somebody come in and say, well, you know, if you need a ride, more people are willing to help you out. If you don't have a ride, ask your neighbor. And it usually works out. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're about halfway through the questions, so we're going to switch the order now. And Alan, you'll go first for the next set of questions here.
Okay.
Okay, so the first question for you then is, what do you view the county's role in when it comes to broadband internet?
It's a good question. It's very expensive. You know, our local phone company has been doing very well at trying to get out in the area with the new technology. And is that technology going to be out of date in six months like a normal computer? I don't know. But I currently have a good system now. But there's other people that don't have that. And we can encourage it, but cost effective is back to, you know, wireless maybe. But even there, it gets difficult, too.
Absolutely. And Kip, the same question for you. What do you view the county's role in when it comes to broadband internet?
I've been a firm supporter that the county should be a facilitator. I don't know if I'm willing to put any taxpayer, Blue Earth County levy money into trying to get broadband to someone. And in the last several months, we have engaged with some different organizations to try to get the private sector. I think it needs to be done by the private sector personally. I certainly don't have a problem having the county stick some resources into it, trying to organize and get the broadband people to start talking and moving it out and getting the fingers out. And I don't know nearly enough about broadband to be very explicit on it. But I do know that getting it out there is very expensive, as Alan said. And I've heard, well, we did have somebody come and present to us after they did do some feelers. And it can be, you know, 8, 10, 16, 20,000 per household to get the hard line out there. So it's more of the wireless and stuff like that. So my support is always going toward the county being supportive and bringing some expertise to the table and some organization, but not real interested in starting up a broadband business, to say.
Sure. Okay, the next question. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Sometimes just maintaining what we have is a good thing. Sometimes if you don't watch your maintenance, things go bad in a hurry. Just trying to keep everything maintained is a hard one. And then making sure that, you know, our trucks and graders are all doing what they should be doing in a timely fashion.
Definitely. And Kip, the same question for you. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
I would say the maintenance issue is getting to be a huge problem. We are trying to build new roads. A county section of road right now is just over $1 million a mile to build a section of county road. Reconstructions can be just about that much. When we start building county roads, like the new County Road 12 here in Mankato, just up by the Justice Center, that section road was tens of millions of dollars, 10 or 12 million dollars for that section road. And it's only three miles long or whatever. So infrastructure cost is just getting very expensive. But the upkeep of our roads, we just really have to start maintaining them. And to keep building new roads is very difficult when you can't keep up with the old roads you have. Otherwise, the rest of the infrastructure in Blue Earth County is pretty solid, other than the fact, like I mentioned, the county shop is getting to be the end of its life. But we have a new Justice Center that's only been in service for about 11 years. We just got the human services building redone. And so building-wise and structural-wise, we're doing pretty well that way. So again, I think we're going to have to stick a lot of our resources to the county roads because we got to get them, county roads out in the rural area so the farmers can get their products to the market. And so our people that live out in the rural area and our small communities throughout the county can get the town to work.
All right. The next question. Blue Earth County is made up of the urban area of Mankato and many rural communities. How do you propose balancing the unique characteristics and needs of both urban and rural Blue Earth County?
Wow.
You have to solve all these issues tonight, right?
Right, yeah. You know, a lot of the small towns have come back to Mankato, and there isn't a lot of businesses or out there to keep the people in those small towns. I mean, from Mapleton, when I grew up, there used to be two grocery stores, two car dealerships. Everything's consolidating. And it's more left these towns as a bedroom community to go to work someplace else. To try to facilitate getting more businesses out in those rural areas is very difficult because they want all the amenities that's in a big town. So it, there again, goes back to having good roads and to be able to get there and then get back home.
Yeah, that's a good point. And the same question for you, Kip. Blue Earth County is made up of the urban area of Mankato and many rural communities. How do you propose balancing the unique characteristics and needs of both urban and rural Blue Earth County?
I think it's very important that we keep our small communities going as well as they can. But I also have been a big supporter, since I've been on the board, about doing a little more rural development as far as business goes. We do allow small businesses to start in the rural area, being small home-based businesses or level one and level two home occupation businesses. But you have to have your home attached to your business. And I think that's fine, but I think we need to support some of that. And we did have a, a couple years ago, we went around the county and asked people what their thoughts were about that. And most people were supportive of that. Now, we certainly don't want Walmarts popping up out in the middle of the county, not having the infrastructure and the sewer and the water that you need for that. But maybe just relaxing our rules just a little bit on the small businesses. And I think it's also very important that you help out the small businesses that are out there. Don't forget the ones that have already been here. Alan and I have both been in business for a long time. But we do have to get new business, but we also can't forget about the businesses out there. And Blue Earth County does have a small, a couple small cities loan programs. The one that we have that we administer through the Mayors and Clerics Association is money set aside for gap financing for people that are out in the rural area or in the small cities. It's funded through the small cities guaranteed by them but ran through us. So that's just one of the programs that we have in Blue Earth County. We'll keep trying to work on more of them.
All right. Now, the next question. Blue Earth County's ethnic diversity is steadily increasing. What does this mean for our county? And what, if anything, should the county be doing to ensure residents are able to thrive here?
Job opportunities would be a large one so that they aren't a burden on the human healthcare system. How that all worked from when our great-grandfathers came over and to now is very different. And I think it's kind of a burden on our taxpayers that has changed. How that would play out, I'm not sure. But that would, you know, that would be a very big concern. But just having jobs for everybody to do something. And, you know, there again goes back to schooling, how to teach people. Not everybody can run a computer anymore. Our trades are very much in need.
Definitely. And Kip, the same question for you. Blue Earth County's ethnic diversity is steadily increasing. What does this mean for our county? And what, if anything, should the county be doing to ensure residents are able to thrive here?
I think it's a good thing because we do need the workforce here. And if people are willing to come into our community and work, make money and pay taxes, I think that's a good thing. We are part of, we do pay some money into the Diversity Council. It's part of, mostly handled through Mankato. Blue Earth County is just going to up their contribution to that for 2021. And we've been part of that for, I think, as long as I've been on the board. So we have a couple of the other commissioners are more involved in that than I am. But they're the city representatives, so that would make sense for that to happen that way. But I certainly think if people want to come into this community and be law Biden citizens and make money and pay taxes, I think that's wonderful. And we got to reach out to them and work together.
All right. And the next question. Is there any recent decision by the current Board of Commissioners that you particularly disagree or agree with, and why?
The recent one, I'll have to praise Kip about that. And, you know, being a candidate, I shouldn't. But trying to keep the levy down to less than 3% would be fantastic. I mean, you know, I'm not running because I don't like what's going on. I'm running for a choice. So, yeah, that would be one of the things. As far as disliking, I don't, I can't pick anything out in particular.
All right. And I guess, Kip, you're on the Board of Commissioners. But same question, I guess. Do you, is there any recent decision that you've really agreed with or disagreed with?
Our board is actually pretty well-rounded. We have had some 3-2 votes in my years in the past. And at the end of the day, you support what the three think is the best for the community. And that's all you can do because that's how you get to where you are. But of the ones that I've been on the short side of, you know, there's still good decisions. They've worked out. As Alan already mentioned, I do like to keep the levy low. I certainly don't have a problem using reserves. And I think that's what they're there for. And so I just, we've been very lucky as a board and as a county to be able to be in an organization like this. And I ran for the same reason Alan's running today. And I appreciate that, that he didn't run for something particularly that you didn't want to change, but you want to be the county commissioner and you want to give back to the community. And I think that's wonderful.
Excellent. Now, the last question that I have before we move over to some Zoom questions, if there's any. So what is your leadership style and why are you the best candidate for the job?
I like to listen and make calm, cool decisions as best I can. And to provide a change. You know, when change comes around, sometimes it renews the energy in people to say, oh, that's great. We can, you know, we can have something more positive here. Or not that the old one was un-positive, but it just, it gives a new energy to the force. When I was on Soil and Water Board, we turned the whole, there were three people in the office. One was a part-time. We lost our director, and then our secretary had a health event. So if you don't have a turnover, you're going to wind up in somewhat of a problem sooner or later.
Yeah. And so, Kip, the same question for you. What is your leadership style and why are you the best candidate for the job?
My leadership style is I like to listen to people and get their input. I'm usually brutally honest. If I don't think it's something I can support, I'll tell them that right up front. And I like to lead by example. If we pass a policy that I don't particularly like, I will still follow that policy. An example might be not, when we started doing the meetings online down at the county, and we had talked about not meeting as a board every other week on Tuesdays and having our board meet at the courthouse. And I said, no, I think we need to be here and show that we can get together at least once every week or once a week on Tuesdays when we're expecting our staff to show up on a day-to-day basis. So I like to lead by that example. And I certainly might be the county commissioner, but I certainly, if they need some help picking something up or cleaning up after a program we have, I'm right there trying to help them out, so.
Excellent. All right, well, that concludes the questions that I have for you. But now I'd like to turn it over But now I'd like to turn it over to Jessica. And Jessica, are there any questions that we have from the Zoom comments?
So we do not have any questions from Zoom. However, we do have an advanced question. And that question is, what do you see as key opportunities for Blue Earth County moving forward?
Okay, and we'll go back to Kip to go first for this one, since we had Alan do the last one. So Kip will go first for this one.
Key opportunities for Blue Earth County? I would have to say this is a great place to live. We have a lot of amenities here. We have a great park system. We have, up until COVID hit, we had a great place to come to get a job and make some decent money and have a good quality of life. We've got an unbelievable school system in all of the surrounding communities and in the Mankato area here. And just a lot of really good opportunities. I've been in this community my whole entire life. I've seen a lot of changes. And we don't plan on going anywhere we love it here. And I think we just have to, we just have to take what we've been doing, keep doing it, and try to improve it just a little bit more.
All right. And same question for you, Alan.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, it was from Zoom and it was about the opportunities that you see here for Blue Earth County.
The opportunities for schooling is great. You know, in the fall, normally the city grows by twofold. So it's a great place for education. That in turns leads to jobs which people stick around for because they find their significant other. That would, that would be one of the things that would come along. And once you get outside the community of Mankato, there's so many things to do with lakes and parks and stuff like that. That's just a nice place to live.
Absolutely. All right, with no more questions, we'd like to give you each 90 seconds to do your closing remarks. And Kip, we'll begin with you.
Well, thank you. And again, I want to thank Greater Mankato Growth and Jessica and you for hosting this tonight. We, very nice to be able to get out here and talk to some people. And I'm sure people will read this and watch it and see it, so great for that. Again, I'm a lifelong resident of Blue Earth County. I have been serving on the board for 18 years. I really enjoy what I do for the county. I sure would like to do it for another four years, so I could really like to have your support on November 3rd.
Excellent. And Alan, your final comments.
Being a lifelong resident and wanting to be able to give back to the community, to give them a choice for a chance, to try four years of being a county commissioner and being able to bring a fresh face with new ideas, I would really appreciate a vote come November.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much for your time. I really appreciate it. And Jessica, I know you have a few closing remarks too. So Jessica?
All right. So on behalf of Greater Mankato Growth, I'd just like to thank everyone for viewing this forum focused on Blue Earth County board candidates and especially express appreciation for our candidates that were with us this evening. So in District Five, that was Kip Brander and Alan Marble. And then in District Four, we had Paul Fitzsimmons as well as Kevin Pep. And then District Three, Mark Peepo. Also, I'd like to thank KTV again for hosting us this evening as well as for their production of these videos. And Ashley, again, thank you for moderating this evening's session. And on behalf of Greater Mankato Growth, we really appreciate everyone's participation. And we welcome you to view more information about elections, candidate information, as well as links to these forums at greatermankateolelections.com. Thank you.